Call to order, the Committee of the Home meeting for Tuesday, August 8th. First item on the agenda is roll call.
Miller.
Here.
Lancy.
Here.
Rack.
Here.
Pepper.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Sulfah.
Here.
Chanset.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Lumen.
Here.
Ayazi.
Here.
Malay.
Here.
Uwer.
Here.
Saran.
Here.
Vocal singer.
Here.
That's 14.
Just a reminder, we want to speak directly into the microphone so that everyone at home can hear us. And if you're in the public, going to be addressing us, please come to the podium and use the microphone so everyone at home can hear as well. Item number three, to approve the minutes, those are for June 13th, 2023. Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion regarding those minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Approved. Item number four, items to be removed, added, or changed. Do we have any changes on the agenda this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. As we went to item number five, then matters from the public. Is anyone here to address this regarding something that is not listed on our agenda this evening? Moving on then to item number six, it is a bid opening, that is for the land sale at 1359 Brandywine Circle. Let's go.
Thank you. We did advertise this property for sale, and by the bid deadline of August 7th, we received one bid. I'll open that now. And the bidder is Jeffrey Keller in the amount of $47,500, and that is in the amount of the minimum bid amount. So we will place this on the regular agenda for acceptance.
Moving on to item number seven, that is for ordinance 23-39. This is for approving the purchase of vacant land that is on Oswald Avenue. Let's go.
Yes, this is a piece of land that we have had some discussions about. It is a 66-foot strip of land that would, that has been separated from another parcel of land. There is a driveway there. It does have the potential to provide access to property to the north if that should develop at some point in the future, and they need supplemental access. So we have negotiated this with the current property owner for the amount of $80,000. We did also have a budget amendment for this amount at the city council meeting last night.
Open up for discussion. Anyone like to make a motion?
No move.
Motion and a second, any additional discussion regarding this item? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. Thank you. Moving on then to item number eight, that is ordinance 23-40. It's a conditional use permit, that's for motor vehicle sales and leasing, new and used, for an internet-based establishment in the general industrial district. This is at 1395 Paramount Parkway, and we have Robert Hunsiker as the applicant.
Thank you, Dan. Robert Hunsinger of Luxury Auto Finder has applied for a conditional use permit to operate a motor sales vehicle leasing new and used internet-based business. This is in addition to his vehicle repair services that he offers at the existing industrial building at 1395 Paramount Parkway. The proposed auto sales will be conducted over the internet with limited inventory being stored inside the building. On occasion, a purchaser or seller may visit the property for paperwork purposes or vehicle repairs. The applicant has operated his business in the community at two other locations prior to the requirement for a conditional use permit. And with relocation of his business, he is now required to obtain a conditional use permit. Staff has reviewed, staff during the review of the project has determined several conditions of approval to be considered. Those conditions are outlined in draft ordinance 23-40, and that includes the plans, commissions, findings, and requests for approval. Some of those suggested conditions to be considered would be that the business inventory vehicles associated to the vehicle sales shall not be located outside of the building. All vehicles must be parked in a striped parking space. The parking of vehicles in the ingress and egress driveways is prohibited. And then, in working with the applicant, requiring the resurfacing of the front parking area, access aisles and driveway shall be completed within two years of the repair of the retaining wall along the southern property line. That retaining wall is not the property of the applicant, so we are trying to show flexibility, allowing him to work. As we work, the city works with the other property owner. That way, he can repair his property after that is done. And then in addition to that, the installation of public sidewalk is required along Paramount Parkway, and a building permit is required for all work. Those are three of the larger items. There was nine conditions of approval that are generally consistent with other uses of this type. At the public hearing, no members from the public did speak, but staff did receive one email communication from a neighboring property owner listing several items for staff and the plan commission to consider. Staff is of the opinion that we have addressed that through the conditions, and the plan commission was satisfied with that response. The letter or the email was included in the packet for council to see. And by a vote of four to zero, the plan commission recommended the city council's approval, subject to the conditions included in draft ordinance 23-40. Staff would recommend that the city council approve this. And the applicant, Robert Hunsinger, is here, if you have any additional questions for him.
And then the related items of amending zoning code and revise in Title III as well, too.
Sorry.
Are related issues?
These are not, those are not related issues. This is, ordinance 23-40 is a separate.
I misunderstood, I thought that the next ones had, were related. No?
Nine and, so eight is a singular conditional use application, nine and 10 are related. Sorry for, if there was a lack of clarity on that.
Just wanted to make sure. Okay, thank you. Open up to council for discussion? And any presentation from the applicant? Any questions of the applicant? Good evening.
I'm Robert Hunsiker. Just want to say, I've been in Batavia for almost 20 years now. I've lived in Batavia, and unfortunately, I didn't know I needed this, but Zach reminded me that I do. So everybody's been great to work with, so if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. We've loved being in Batavia, and we hope, you know, everything works out, and we could certainly stay for a lot more years, so. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not...
Since we have you on camera and you are here, can you tell us a little bit more about your, about the business?
Yeah, so what we do is personal purchasing. Repeat and referral customers mostly, we do very, very little advertising. That's why we're an industrial park. But we do personal purchasing, we find the exact car that our customers are looking for, and, you know, make, model, color. We deal mostly in higher-end luxury cars, sports cars, but we do have a little, a wide variety just for our customers, so.
Presenting any of them? Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion then regarding 23-40. I'll move. Motion and second?
Yes.
Either way, I'll take whatever one you want to put. The two of us are down.
Any additional discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. All right, then. Moving on then to items 23-36 and 23-38.
Okay. If it's okay with you, I'm going to discuss ordinance 23-36 first, just to keep clarity. This will be amending the text of the zoning code, establishing truck and semi-trailer storage lot regulations. As the committee may remember, at the May 9th meeting, we did have a discussion item regarding truck and semi-trailer storage lots, and it was directed at that time for staff to explore additional regulations and a potential for a license. Staff has come back and worked with the plan commission, and on the June 21st, plan commission meeting, we conducted a public hearing for the proposed tax amendments outlined in draft ordinance 23-36. Several of the larger items for consideration that plan, that staff discussed with the plan commission and is proposing, is that, staff is proposing that, that a truck and semi-trailer storage lot be considered as a conditional use, requiring a conditional use permit rather than being a permitted use by right. That would be limited to the LI and GI zoning districts. And during that discussion, staff worked with the plan commission to seek a recommendation for determining what would be appropriate distance buffer from residential uses. Staff provided exhibits in the packet tonight, and also at the plan commission, showing distances of 500 feet, 750 feet, and 1,000 feet from the residentially zone districts, and what properties would be ineligible for operating this use. Through the discussion with the plan commission, staff and the plan commission determined that 750 feet was appropriate, and based on how staff has enforced other buffers for uses, we have determined that 750 feet is enforceable as well. So if the, if the council is okay with that, that would be staff's recommendation to proceed with the 750 feet. In addition to that, staff is proposing a minimum building size to be considered with any truck and semi-trailer storage lot. Traditionally, when this was considered for business property, outdoor storage, there was no defined minimum building requirement. It was just that they had to have a building. So staff is proposing a 500, a 5,000-square-foot building be constructed with 2,500 square feet, be dedicated to space not utilized for storage, garages, or mechanic bays. The purpose for this is that it would allow for the repurposing of any site if the use were to change, while also adding, you know, more potential use to the overall site for that existing user rather than just a parking lot. With that, staff is requesting that, and worked with the plan commission to require that all lots be paved with concrete or asphalt, curbing, and gutter for these, for all parking areas and drive aisles. This is consistent with how we have been regulating business property, outdoor storage in recent years, so this would not be a new requirement for users in recent years. It would just be consistent with how we've treated it traditionally. And then with this, we are also looking at requiring set parking minimum dimensions for drive aisles and parking spaces. Currently, the zoning code is silent on minimum parking dimensions for semi-trucks, semi-trucks with tractors and trailers, and then it's trailers. So we have defined some minimum standards, that way they can operate safely on a, on a site. The minimum standards that we have proposed are consistent with what has been getting generally approved in the past, so it would not be creating too many issues for existing users. And then staff has also proposed enhancing the landscape around the perimeter of the site and increasing the required amount of landscape islands. Currently, there is no landscape islands required for this type of use in their parking lots, so staff is suggesting a one island for every 15 parking spaces to kind of break up the parking and, you know, reduce the overall urban heat island effect on the property. This is something that would be applicable under the zoning code to all new parking adjacent to residential as it's structured. So any new parking, meaning expansion of parking for, or new sites, would have to meet this requirement adjacent to residential, if it's owned in LI or GI, which is limited to very few properties, generally speaking. And then staff is also proposing limiting the hours of operation for truck and trailer storage lots between 10:00 and PM and 6:00 AM in the LI zoning district. This is to be conscious of neighbors, trying to limit the 24-hour access of, these types of facilities tend to utilize. That way, you know, they are coming in at more appropriate times and be more conscious, again, of the residents closer to them. Because in some cases, you know, there could be heavy traffic traveling on ways to get to these facilities, even if they are not generally adjacent to the residential district. And then there's several other use regulations outlined in the staff memo, one being that staff is seeking to prohibit the establishment of a tow service establishment with this use. Staff feels that both uses should be conducted on separate properties because of their intensities. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the zoning code amendments as drafted in ordinance 23-36 and whatever was in the memo.
Counsel, any questions or any feelings?
Generally don't want these in Batavia, so I think what we've done, what you're doing here seems to make it something that somebody wouldn't want to do, because I would imagine they're not going to want islands, they're not going to want to build a 5,000-square-foot building. Is there a risk that we're, we're saying, sure, you can park your trucks here, but we're like creating something that legally, I guess, is there a risk in trying to make it prohibitive for somebody to do it without just saying, we don't allow it in town?
Well, you're saying the quiet part out loud, yes.
What's that?
You're saying the quiet part out loud. Yes, of course. We can just go to 1,000 feet if we want to.
So for clarity, are you, are you asking that...
Are we putting ourselves at a legal risk because we put something out there that says, sure, you can have truck parking, but you can only, you know, you have to have all these islands, you have to have all these things that truck parking companies don't want? Is it really, I mean, why don't we just say we don't want truck parking and be done with it?
If I, if I may, I think, you know, in many cases, you, in many other communities, you know, develop regulations for types of uses and limit, you know, what you can do. And in some cases, it's, it's very onerous, you know, to do certain things. So, you know, we are kind of sending a message with these zoning code amendments that, you know, would make it very difficult or very restrictive to put some of these in the community. Wouldn't completely disallow them, but it certainly would make them think twice if they want to do it, and they want to just, you know, put a gravel lot in or something like that and just dump a bunch of trucks.
Or we could require a license and charge them for it.
That's the next, that's the next item.
I think it's my understanding that over-road semi-trucks, when they have a rest period, it has to be a 10-hour period of time. So the 10 to 6 would be eight hours, so that would exclude anybody being able to stay overnight if they were to drop a load and pick up a load to go regionally in the area.
So they wouldn't, you know, these operators should not, I mean, dwelling units are not allowed in the industrial park, they should not be staying in there and operating their trucks overnight.
But if they hit their mark where they have to stop and rest?
Well, this would be, they'd be part of a, you know, typically, this is a corporate entity, so they would be an employee of the entity parking there. So, you know, it would be their operator, their logistics company, they'd have to work with that. I understand, you know, that they do have their DOT regulations and restrictions, but with that being said, if they're parking here as an over-the-road trucker for their, you know, their employer, they should be coordinating ample, you know, service for them, where they can stay. You know, in a previous community where I worked, that operator put their employees in hotels overnight. And that was, they had a, you know, that was part of their, their process for how they worked with a similar type use.
So if we were to get a hotel, and the operator would do it, then we would be out of the regulations for somebody to be able to put their over-the-road trucker in the hotel with this ordinance, if we were to get a hotel?
What I think we need to consider is that the hours of operation are what are the hours that somebody can come to and from the facility. That doesn't mean that they have to leave at 6:00. If they have to stay 10-hour rest, then maybe they, they can't leave until 8:00 the next morning. So, I mean, it really doesn't comport with the hours limitations that they might have for their mandatory rest periods under federal law.
Okay. Thank you.
It was my understanding that, I've seen some of these up and down, 64, Meridian Parkway, and some other places around the area, they're not really for like over-the-road parking and staying the night. They're for like, hey, I'm not going to be using this truck for like a week, and I'm going to park it. These places are not the prettiest places. And I'm fully with like, I would rather just not have them at all, but I think the ordinance is doing that for us, so as Mark said, like, do we just say, if we are in a majority agreement, for me, I'm like, no. But I'm fully fine with being like, all right, 1,000 square feet. Because honestly, like, truckers want to be close to the road, they want to be close to the highway, right? We're, we're a little ways off the highway. You know, this is going to be one of the things where like, you're going to have trucks coming up and down Kirk Road, and sometimes they get lost and they meander through downtown. We've seen that several times already, some, down through some of the Woodland Hills roads, like, not really what I want. You know, the way people are going now, like, a lot of them are running red lights, a lot of them are speeding, a lot of them are not trying to watch a kid get hit. So I'm down for like, not having it at all. But if we're going to have it, this puts it east of Kirk Road, where a lot of that truck stuff is going to be, I'd be fine with 1,000 square feet, but I would rather just be like, no, because again, is this put us in a legal fight if someone tries to fight it?
Yeah, thank you for, for those comments. I think it is a valid point to be made that in many cases, they're, you know, all the inventory on the site for these facilities typically is not moving in a given day, so there could be trucks, there could be trailers sitting for potentially days, weeks, or they're constantly just rotating out, depending on what their operation style is. So, you know, that being said, it could be a rather unappealing facility. As you indicated, there are several in the area that are kind of limited, you know, in what they provide. You know, with, with the distance, you are correct, with, you know, at 750 feet, it does still allow for some area of the light industrial district west of Kirk Road to be, to be utilized for this. However, we are limited on available land, so it primarily would be a focus more to the east side of Kirk Road, where there is some opportunities for vacant land, where those properties have previously been identified for potential uses of this. And that being said, you know, that is a more heavily industrial corridor as well, so balancing out, you know, where they can be allowed and distance from residential, you know, if the council is in favor, would generally be, it generally would be okay to allow that type of use over there if they meet the requirements of the zoning code.
Yeah, I think also keep in mind that, you know, we're, we're looking at this as a multi-pronged thing. You know, we're not completely prohibiting the ability for some entity to put these in, in the right location, but in order to do it, you have to follow certain minimum performance standards, you have to get a conditional use, and then if we pass the other ordinance, you're going to have to get a license and pay a fee every year. So there's multiple layers of this that are going to make it not the most attractive, but it will not prohibit them necessarily from going in certain places in the community.
Can I clarify, for an example, Bond Drive, that area, the map shows half of it is basically not used, not permitted. Does that mean it is permitted on the other half, or does, if a parcel is partial?
So how we've, yeah, so how we've treated anything, and this is similar for cannabis, if a parcel is within a buffer distance, meaning so half of a tax pin parcel falls underneath that, we would treat that as the whole parcel itself cannot be utilized for that use. That is how we've treated these buffers in the past, that's how we treat cannabis, so we'd be, to be consistent, that's how we would apply it under the code today. You know, if it's something that is in a, I guess, in a distance, and close, you know, where it's barely touching any of the maps that we provided, we would have to do a more in-depth analysis and so would a potential applicant to make sure that they actually are. Because as it is proposed, you know, this is a survey grade, so those ones that are marginally close, there'd have, there would be some potential for research.
Right. And then along those lines, if it's not a trailer parking facility, but maybe a distribution center goes there that's permitted, but there are trucks overnight, like, where do you draw the line there?
Yeah, so the way that the zoning code is, we are separating the uses pretty fairly clearly. If it is a distribution warehouse or facilities like that, like what's being proposed up on Kirk and Fabian, that is a rather large warehouse facility, there is ample truck parking. AgCo here in town is another example, they have several trailers or, you know, things that rotate in and out for their inventory. That is treated differently because they are a large distribution, where the trailers there are on a temporary basis, they are, are rotating in and out, they are transporting goods for their purpose. So that is where we are drawing the line, and we have worked at clearly defining the uses separately.
Thank you.
So I guess what I'm trying to figure out here is, how do these, how would you say these benefit the city? There is a land development aspect to it, although I have my, I have a few trepidations there. Would it aid any existing or possibly future businesses in the area to have this sort of facility, or would it be a purely sort of self-contained entity, would you say? Would this have useful effects for other industry here, for instance?
You know, I guess it's a loaded question, it really depends, but, you know, from a standpoint of the use in our community, you know, a parking lot is minimal in the property, you know, taxes collected from it, you know, and the impacts associated to trucks driving on our roads. You know, it said, you know, trucks can, you know, over 1,000, on average, an average truck is like over 1,000 vehicles on the road, so they are damaging our local streets, our roads, and that is, you know, more tax burden on our local taxpayers for this style of use. As an over-the-road, you know, if it is an over-the-road trucking facility, there's no guarantee that they're actually even delivering locally. You know, they could be parking here, but they could be driving to Kansas City and then driving to Minneapolis for their deliveries, and it's not touching any goods that went here. So, you know, from that standpoint, you know, these traditionally did locate more towards heavier transportation corridors or logistic centers with rail components or marine, you know, marine vessel components. And now we're starting to see a lot of smaller operations and independent operations kind of hodgepodge throughout the region.
I guess that's a question, why here though, compared to closer to a highway or a...
Available land.
Hmm. Yeah, that's fair. And we're getting increasingly boxed in. I just, I kind of, I'm kind of siding with Councilman Miller that I don't see a good, I don't see this being a good use case in general for what we have as a limited resource.
As the zoning code currently exists, there's very few limitations though, that we do have to control and regulate these, so that is why staff is proposing a conditional use permit. You know, that, that was the result of the discussion, as a business property, outdoor storage entity with the construction of a building, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Drew, it is a permitted use?
Currently, so yeah, currently, yeah, basically, a truck facility built to the current code would be a permitted use. With the change to a conditional use and calling this as a separate, you know, use type, we would be able then impose additional regulations beyond what we're able to do right now.
Okay, so this is more of a constraint rather than an allowance?
Correct. It's cleaning up the code to clearly define the use as well as provide a higher level of limitations on where they can develop and how they develop. So if they would choose to come to Batavia and be a part of our community, they have to, you know, start complying with the recommendations in our code at the time.
And one other thing I would note, that it's very difficult for us to legally prohibit uses entirely. We have to really do allow some use somewhere in the community, and most of the time, you do it in your general industrial district because that's where we put the stuff. And so, you know, we have to give some consideration for that, but putting all the limitations, the conditional use, the licensing, makes it more difficult. I mean, same thing for adult uses, you know, the adult uses are only allowed in our general industrial district for the most part. So, you know, if somebody wanted to open up some kind of a adult cabaret, they would need to go through the process, and they could only locate it in... And they could only locate it in the general industrial district areas kind of thing, so.
I would support moving it to 1,000 foot buffer. And then, I know this is the next ordinance, but increasing it to 750 per parking space now instead of in four years and just tighten it up from the get-go.
It sounds a clear message to the community. I had mentioned this during proper use, meaning, you know, we don't want to attract this kind of thing. But then we're all also guilty of needing this thing by the way we've changed the way we shop. So everyone here that shopped at eBay or anywhere online in the last week ultimately is responsible for the uptick in the need for these types of facilities. It's just how we live now.
I'd like to express my support for Alderman Buck's point that yes, the 1,000 foot barrier and buffer, I mean, and yeah, put the price up high now.
Is that a motion? Motion and a second on the floor. Do we have any additional discussion regarding this item?
It's a motion to amend.
Yeah. To be clear, to amend the buffer to 1,000.
What is the motion to amend specifically that we are voting on?
1,000 foot buffer and 750 per spot. That's the next, that's not the next, the next one, yeah.
Motion and a second. Any additional discussion regarding this? Take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I just have it. Okay. And moving on to the licensing part, does someone like to make a motion there?
I'd like to make a motion to amend it to $750 per license, right? Yes.
I think it's requiring a license and $750 per space?
Yes.
Anyone like to second the amendment? Motion and a second. Any additional discussion regarding the amendment? Create a voice vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I just have it. There you go. Thank you. Right, moving on then to item number 11. It's a discussion regarding Tri-City ambulance service. This was brought to the council by Alderman Millay. And I believe our staff has items they wanted to discuss as well. Who wanted to get started?
Chief Hansen, just for everyone's benefit, put together a presentation talking about what Tri-City ambulance is and what the history has been. So it might be a good way to start the discussion.
Thank you, Laura. And thank you, I just have to bring it up here, which I got to find here.
You do stop, share.
Yeah. There we go.
Share your screen so that Alan can see the presentation as well.
Share. And. Share again. Got it. Okay. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Where is the? Mm-hmm. I jumped. There it is. Okay, thank you, Alan.
Thanks, sir.
All right, for the purposes of community to hold discussion regarding the Tri-City ambulance service, I put together just a little background and history. Many of you are new to the council and/or have not been around for the whole history. And of course, American chime in anytime he wants. He has more knowledge of the history than I do. So basically, the history, I'll make it quick. Prior to Tri-City, the formulation of Tri-City ambulance, EMS services in the Tri-City were hospital-based. They came out of only two hospitals located in, one in Geneva, Geneva Community Hospital, and one in St. Charles, which was Delmore Hospital up on North 50. Then, early, well, early in the 1980s, that program started to falter much due to the fact that, for financial reasons and the fact that Geneva Community Hospital was looking at closing at the time. So because they were in jeopardy of losing the ambulance services through the hospital, discussions ensued between the mayors and led by Jeff Schelke. Ad- addly enough, and that was in relation to a earlier consolidation mode that occurred for what they called PSAPs, which is Public Service Answering Points, which is basically TRICOM and the dispatch center. Prior to 1976 and 1975, when you dialed 911, it went to the local fire stations and things. And then in order to meet the 911 legislation and to consolidate those measures, TRICOM was created under an IGA also. Because that was so well-received and worked so well, they decided to talk about doing the same thing with the ambulances. In the interim, ambulances were moved to the Geneva Fire Station and the St. Charles Fire Departments as they left the hospitals. And the mayors, in conjunction with the fire departments, created through an IGA or the, the local municipalities, the TCA organization under the IGA. So far, I must be doing all right. He's looking at me like, ah.
The only thing you're missing here is, is that when we got, after we had success with Tri-City 911, Chief Madsen in St. Charles and myself and Chief Johnson in Geneva had a little gathering and there was a lot of politics at the hospital level. They didn't know what was going to happen and how it was going to do. So they suggested that to really put some political power behind this thing, we should take the ambulance that's at Community Hospital and take the two paramedics that were then on it and split them between the ambulance that we had in Batavia and the ambulance that they had at the Geneva Fire Station. So we initially ran this thing with two medics out of Delmore, went to the St. Charles station. One medic went to the Geneva station with one EMT, which the chief thought was a good way for people who were aspiring to become paramedics could be that second guy. And we had a whole bunch of volunteers in both Geneva and Batavia that wanted to do that. And so then Batavia got an ambulance too. So we were running three ambulances there from the very beginning of the Tri-City ambulance. But two of them only had one paramedic and an EMT.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor.
A lot of alphabet soup there as well, too. EMS one more time is?
Emergency Medical Services.
Each hospital identify as an EMS.
Sorry, I get lost in jargon.
Okay. TCA is Tri-City.
Tri-City Ambulance.
And Delmore Hospital as a separate hospital. Community Hospital as a separate hospital.
We're two separate.
Combined to Delmore hyphen Community Hospital before they became part of the Northwestern Network.
You are correct. See, a lot of you know a lot of the history. So, but in May 1985, that original intergovernmental agreement was formed to create, officially create TCA, as the mayor had stated, which later became part of the Southern Fox Valley Emergency Medical Services System, which, as Dan had pointed out, runs through Northwestern Community, Northwestern Delmore Community Hospital presently, so. TCA, as we just talked about, from its inception of breaking out to run three ambulances, which were ALS ambulances, but were only staffed, the two paramedics up in St. Charles, the paramedic and an EMT in Geneva, and a paramedic and an EMT in Batavia, using what was existing fleet in Batavia and Geneva. They are now, they operate six ALS ambulances, five primary ALS units, which are staffed 24/7, 365. They all now have two IDPH licensed paramedics, which are cert, which are certified in Region 9. And two, two each in both Batavia and St. Charles, on the east and west sides of the river, and one located in the city of Geneva on the east side. All of them are currently located and housed in the individual city's fire stations. And they currently respond to over, well, last year, 7,860 responses, approximately 2,796 of those being in Batavia alone. We now added a couple, a few years, about four years ago, an ALS demand unit because of the peak demands during the hours of 8 to 5, which is Monday through Friday. It's staffed at Geneva's Fire Station Number 2. So that gives us the, gives us a fleet or of six ALS ambulances during our peak times, which can be utilized by any single community based on the demands of those individual communities. So they move up and down the river as demand requires.
Feasibly, if there was a serious catastrophic accident in St. Charles, at one time, all of our ambulances could be sent up there.
And that has happened periodically in a year, not often, but once in a while. As you see on the map, you can see how they can move across those areas if one community has a large mass casualty incident or something that requires multiple ambulances. Because they're part of the, the IGA, the governmental agreement, they can move to either of those entities that require or need it before we bring in auto aid or mutual aid type ambulances, depending on the need.
So for people who haven't had to go through that before, if there were a catastrophic event in St. Charles and we had to send our personnel there, we have no personnel here. It is backfilled by neighboring communities where they send the ambulances to us if necessary.
Yes, through a mutual aid agreement, you get change of quarters ambulances, which are centralized in the city of Geneva, so that they can move up and down the valley as needed. And as we get into, into that aspect, we'll get into it in a later slide, how we cover that aspect when one community requires more ALS service over another. TRICOM Dispatch, obviously, we talked about that. Now is a single point of dispatch for the PSAP Center. It not only dispatches those ambulances, but the communities added ALS services to our fire engines, which happened about 20 years ago, I think, if my memory recalls, which allows those initial fire units to respond as first responders to the scene and start initial ALS care. Those ALS units, and there are a couple of BLS, they're non-transport units. They don't have the capability to transport patients, but they have the same equipment as an ambulance. They have the ability to restock off the ambulance when it gets there because they use the exact same equipment. And the ambulance then can transport to the hospital and then restock that equipment at the hospital.
Can you give an example of the type of vehicle that could be deployed like that? That's like the commander?
Our fire engines. Each, each fire station's frontline fire engine are advanced life support certified through IDPH in the Southern Fox Valley system. And they carry the exact same equipment, not the totality of equipment, but the basic need and immediate service equipment on the engines to provide immediate lifesaving, lifesaving care, like cardiac monitors, airways, drugs, IVs, things of that nature. The other advantage is by restocking at the hospital, especially since we're out of Delmore in the Southern Fox Valley Emergency Medical System. Delmore is centralized, as you know, in the Tri-Cities. And those ambulances, then, as they become immediately available, are already centralized and available to move again through the Tri-Cities, through our cooperative advantage. The Tri-City Ambulance Board is a seven-member board. It was originally an eight-member board, but it's currently seven members, two members from each of the corporate authorities of each city, Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles. And our current representatives, as appointed by the mayor and approved by the council, are Mayor Schelke and yourself, Dan Chanson. We have one trustee from the Batavian Countryside Fire Protection District. That happens to be Gene Olmsted. And originally, we also had representatives from St. Charles Fire Protection District, which withdrew in 2011. And we also had one from Geneva Township, which withdrew about five years ago. So that's where we can, and we stand currently as a seven-member board. The lead agency is the City of St. Charles. They are responsible for the day-to-day management of the purchasing, the ordering, and basically a supervision of the needs and resources of the, of the purchasing of ambulances and the billing, overseeing the billing company. Staff advisors are each fire chief. We're responsible for the local operation within each community and the operations within the fire stations. There is also a TCA administrator who handles the administrative paperwork and, and aspect of it. The finances for the TCA is the City of St. Charles through the Finance Department, which handles the investments, capitalizations, and purchases, as we discussed. Budgets are done in accordance with the TCA policies and procedures, but they also have to meet the, the City of St. Charles budgeting requirements as set forth in the IGA, but they are separately audited and watched for public purposes. Ambulance billing is done through a third-party service called Andre's, currently Andre's Medical Billing, which is a third-party. And residents within our community, because of the tax base that helps support your fire stations and things, are billed at a lower cost than non-residents because they're already supplemented by taxes. Collections are handed through, handled through, through Andre's Medical Billing when necessary. And many things like Medicare and other payments, some insurances have caps, and they basically become write-offs or uncollected. The minister, the current administrator was hired full-time, used to be part-time about six years ago. And due to the volume, increased volume, and they're, like I said, responsible for the day-to-day administrative aspect. So there's no employee-employer relationships with the, with the ambulance personnel who are contracted through PSI, as we've discussed. The position costs are not per person, but they're an overall, overall cost for the contract. Therefore, salaries, which include overtime, are not specifically negotiated by TCA. Neither are their benefits and the discipline, because they have another employer, are handled by that vendor. So our current contract for TCA is on a one-year extension from an original contract, which occurred in 2017, and then went to, to a couple of extensions, mostly due to COVID at the particular time. So they were, they were extended at that point in time. The vendor is paid in monthly payments at this point in time. Contracted paramedics, as we stated, are coordinated in the same fire stations as the other department personnel and the different, and through the different departments. So they are subject to the rules, regulations, policies, and procedures of each individual department, in addition to their own company policies and procedures. Southern Fox Valley EMS training is required by all paramedics, our staff, our paramedics and their paramedics, which train together in order to provide consistency and uniform in, in the policies and protocols that are required through the IDPH in the, in the Northwestern and Southern Fox Valley system. There can be little challenges because there are little idiosyncrasies between the three departments based on their, their policies and some of their adopted procedures. But most of them are pretty much 90-plus, 90-plus percent in line with each other. As you know, staffing is provided by PSI and managed by PSI, which furnishes all the IDPH licensed paramedics. It does provide a paramedic coordinator for each of the host departments, which coordinates those schedules and coordinates the stocking and inventory and inspections of the ambulances. Those paramedics, though, do have a secondary interview with the host fire department, the chief or an administrative chief, to determine whether they are fit within our individual departments. And their primary responsibility within TCA is to provide basic and advanced emergency medical care. Geneva and St. Charles also use them as supplemental fire. They do have to be basic operations firefighter assist, mostly in, in caring for any injury. They do have to be basic operations firefighter assist, mostly in caring for any injured personnel or citizens at fire scenes, not for direct fire suppression. One of, one of the highlights of TCA was, it was in 2016, it was recognized as award-winning services by the state of Illinois through Governor Rauner and Lieutenant Governor Evelyn Sanguinetti, easy for me, Sanguinetti, came out and provided a proclamation as a premier cooperative done by intergovernmental agreements at that point in time. So has been recognized by the state as being a, one of the forefronts in a premier cooperative. It also has received three, three-year accreditation from the Commission on Accreditation of Ambulance Services, three times in a row for over the last nine years, and it just got reaccredited this last year for three more years. As, you know, looking ahead, we do have to look at additional resources and service demands. I think you're all aware that our call volume has been rising. We did put on the demand ambulance, but we do know that EMS is probably our largest service demand and will require additional resources as we move forward. The, we, you know, we currently have the two ALS frontline engines, which assist and start initial care many times for those ambulances, and we are looking forward to hopefully having an ALS, our rescue squad ALS certified. It's currently only BLS certified, which is a departmental staffing issue. The six TCA, you know, hopefully we'll get all six TCA ambulances up at a 24/7/365 status. Right now, we have one that's just a demand and looking at sharing more services and especially across expenses of ambulances. Cardiac monitors and medical equipment is, everything is on the rise. But the bottom line is we need more paramedics and there is a current national shortage and a local shortage in paramedics, which is our greatest challenge at this point in time. So unless the mayor has additional history that I didn't, that's a flyover.
I just wanted to interject. Our budgeted contribution as part of that intergovernmental agreement is about $240,000 per year right now.
Correct. So our contribution's $240,000 and St. Charles is also about $240,000 and Geneva's is a little less, but then we have two ambulances, St. Charles has two ambulances, and they have basically one in core, one and a third. So it's, it's based on a, on a, an equation that's worked out based on those ambulances within the community through TCA and what the underlying charge is to offset the difference or the loss between revenue and the balance of what the cost to operate the system is.
I recall it's been a fairly static bill that we received. I think it's only been once in the last eight years I can remember where we had.
You are correct.
An unusual year where they warned us, hey, it's going to be real expensive this year.
And it has come down as they had accumulated some reserves that then they decided to return back to the communities in a lower contributions.
Correct.
I mean, we have a variety of payers to those bills. It could be Medicare, it could be all kinds of insurance companies, it could be personal. And so as a result of that, this, this money's coming into the tri-cities from a variety of different sources, and that's where sometimes we is build up a little extra money than what we need to operate. So it's always been our policy that we redistribute it on a fair basis to the three towns that were out there. I just want to add, Chief has done a marvelous job with this of trying to explain what this is all about, so thank you for doing that. I would just caution, or not caution, I would suggest that most of you, not all of you, but most of you have been to my house and seen my basement, so you know what I've got down there and what I have. So it's, that situation has spread itself to the mayors of the region because I'm the former chairman of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and I am the ongoing chairman of the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Plannings Council of Mayor, so I get to know most of the mayors in the area. So I guess what I am told I have become is the go-to mayor in the region to talk to about ambulance service. And specifically this contract thing, because there's a lot of union involvement, depending on what town you're in. And when we were going to do this, I think at the time when we started, PSI maybe had two or three other departments they were starting with. And one of them I remember specifically was Carol Stream. And so I had called the fire chief in Carol Stream, who I knew, and he couldn't say enough good things about PSI and how well it was working for them. And then there was a couple of towns over near the northwest side of the suburban area around Old Park that had PSI in there. And so I called the gentleman who was the president and said, could you come out to talk to us? And he came out and then the two chiefs from Geneva and St. Charles came down and we only had the initial meeting with him. And then he left and we all gathered to talk and everybody said, well, this sounds like the way to go because the paramedic program at that time was still kind of emerging and, you know, trying to put your firemen into that program, which was going to be a whole new, different thing, but this way you're going to get trained people coming in here who are also already all certified and ready to go. So that's how the whole thing started, and so I've been asked many times. Now, I will tell you, there are some other contractors who've gotten into this business. And from what I get, I'm not going to name names, but from what I gather, PSI has probably the strongest, good reputation. There's a couple others that have not treated their employees well, they've put people out that weren't fully trained. I mean, there's a variety of, of issues that have come out, but as far as I know, PSI don't let you come on unless you've got all the certifications as a trainer and whatever. And there's been a couple of times when they were short in our contract and to offer it up, they put it out to all those in their system, if you come and work today in the tri-cities, we'll give you, I think it's $1,000 just to come in here and fill in this gap that we were going to have. So I think we have had one instance where we had to take an ambulance out of service for a while because they, somebody came and got sick, as I remember. Wasn't that what happened?
Called off sick.
Yeah. So, I mean, I suppose it happened, but then we do have, now, how many of our full-time firemen are paramedics?
Fourteen.
How many?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, okay. So, I mean, we have-
But they're all EMTs, so they're all certified.
So, I mean, but where I'm going is, we have, all three departments have a backup team for this ambulance. And it's very custom that the ambulance goes and then the engine from Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles go, and most of the guys that go on that know what they're doing and what their response should be and what to do and whatever have you. So I would tell you, it was the town that has six senior living communities. I go to speak to them all at least once or twice a year, and this subject is the big thing that they talk about. And in our case, they can't say enough about how good they think the ambulance service is, and what they specifically like is that PSI hires women. And there's a number of the medics are women, and the older ladies really like the fact that Batavia's always got a woman generally that can come over to their aid and be with them when they're having whatever's going on. So it's, it's been good. Now, I will tell you, there's some other mayors that have hired some of these other companies and said, I got to get them out of here, they don't know what they're doing. So this is not, as a region, this has not been a pure, pure successful situation, but any PSI, I've not heard anybody really complain about them. I've certainly heard some, I think a couple of them just threw some contractors out of their department because they didn't like the way the whole thing was being run. So we don't have that here yet, but I know some people, even in Batavia, who have had people work for some of those companies and they've quit because it's so badly managed by some of them. So that's, that is a question out there, and PSI has always been upfront and run it very professionally, so.
I don't think we need to hold them honest, though. They've held, they've held the contract. They're the only ones, right, who have ever held it?
Yes, it did go out for RFP. Last time was 2012, they did go out for an RFP and they had only one other vendor bid and through the process, PSI was retained.
Have they been low bid every time? And I'm not even saying that we need to go low bid on something like this, I'm just curious.
They were selected through the RFP process, so.
And you got, we don't, we have a meeting, what, five times a year, six times a year? So at the meeting, the fire chiefs are sitting there, and many times the union members from the three departments may, some of them may be sitting there. So there's the opportunity for plenty of playback or feedback as to what's going on here and what's going wrong. And, you know, we've generally gotten pretty positive feedback on, from those. I think there's some that like to see the whole system be turned in, turned over to the union and let the union become the contractor for this. That would significantly increase our price. Because you would then have pensions you'd have to pay, you'd have family health insurance you'd have to pay. And the kind of the wild question in the room, because I've heard this from other mayors, is what's the medical malpractice premium going to be on this? Because right now PSI covers Batavia and Geneva and St. Charles with medical malpractice insurance, and that includes covering all the firemen from the three departments that go with on a call, so if anything's done, they're automatically covered under their PS, their, their insurance premium.
Yeah, I mean, something like that would be written into an RFP or, or whatever, but, yeah, I did, and listen, the relationship might be great. Listen, I think we have, with Tri-City Ambulance, a phenomenal idea and possibly a really good partner, and seems like over the years has been a really good partner. It's just troublesome as, you know, and rightfully so. I'm newer to council, newer to the area the most, but somebody owns a contract for that long is, you know, I just, it throws up a red flag. You just want to take a second look at it and go, oh, wow. Especially if they're the only ones who've ever owned it. It's almost, you know, outsiders look at that and go, what's, what's going on here?
I would agree with you if there weren't RFP processes. So, you know, because of the, the size of the contract, that, you know, anyone can bid on it.
Agreed, but things get through RFP processes that people want to get through. I mean, I'm just saying, if, as an outsider looking at it, it's like something's rotten in Denmark, somebody's owned a public contract.
It's a public process.
Oh, I understand.
That's RFP's, everything after the bond is open book.
I totally understand.
If you know of something that has been done in an underhanded manner, I mean, please.
I don't know, I don't know anything firsthand, but I would like to chime in here. I asked for this to be put on the discussion and I've prepared some thoughts and I have some questions, and I greatly appreciate your presentation, it was very informative. Thank you for doing that, Chief. And I will say, I think Tri-City Ambulance has, it's coming on four decades now, and especially knowing a little more history, has served the tri-cities very well. I think, you know, getting to collaborate with the tri-cities is, is to all our advantage. It was a couple of years ago, I've been on council for a while, and before I was on council, I didn't really, didn't know much. I had heard Tri-City Ambulance, but didn't know much about it. And, you know, I've learned more and more, and you recall, Mayor, a couple, it's come up a couple of times over the last few years, this discussion, and your response has been the, the cost of bringing it in-house is going to be, you know, skyrocket the tax bill, and I, and I get that. But I come at it from a little different perspective, and I want to share this. As you know, I represent teachers and bus drivers and custodians and, and I negotiate for workers. So take that, you know, as a disclosure. And so really what we have is, is a, an outsourced situation happening, but through a Tri-City agency, it's an intergovernmental agreement since, you know, I think '85 you said. So what I'm curious about is, and I'm wondering, and it's part of the reason why I bring this up, is so everyone is aware, and I think that your presentation did a great job to do that, but are the citizens, you know, so aware that they, in their hour of greatest need, that the paramedic that shows up wearing our uniform is not our employee is a little concerned to me? And if, and if they're fine with that, so be it, that's, I got no problem with that. But I, you know, as a teacher, I taught for 18 years here in Batavia, and, you know, I taught in the building trades and, and woodshop, and, and I recall vividly 9/11 in 2001. I was on my way to school and I heard it on WGN, and I went in and I flipped on the TV and with the eighth grade students that were in the shop class, we watched. And in the time following that, the years following that, I saw a number of young people aspiring to become firefighters. And, you know, I've had conversations with them, and I was in a unique position where I taught at the middle school, and then I was doing building trades at the high school. So I literally taught kids when they were in sixth and seventh grade, and again, when they were seniors or in, and in the interim. And I know quite a few of them that, that aspired to become firefighters and a number of them are right now. So, you know, I remember having conversations with, with them, as they talk about their careers, you know. In the building trades, I would always bring in the, the different trades apprentice programs to, to talk to kids and see where they wanted to go, what they wanted to do. And I remember talking with them that, you know, being a first responder, that's a noble career, but also it can be a good career. But when things get outsourced, that becomes more problematic, and I'll get a little bit more into that. So when, when, when a position like that, when a first responder gets outsourced, the same thing happens in school districts when they outsource, plus when they outsource the cleaning services. The profits, you have to have profits now because you have this outsourced company, they now get their profits by pinching labor, you know, because your other fixed costs are your fixed costs. You know, you're not going to be able to change that. And so, you know, that's kind of, you know, where my thoughts were with it. And again, I disclose that I, you know, am an advocate for workers, that's, that's what I do for a living. So that, that kind of, you know, for the couple of years that this kind of came up, you know, you and I at this table have talked about, and I understand where you're coming from. So fast forward a little bit. In January, we, we got a letter from, the city had a letter from the firefighters, the Batavia Professional Firefighters, Local 34, 36, sharing concern that there was times when the ambulance wasn't being manned. And the reasons they gave were that there was a huge turnover, the, there was burnout, there was a requirement that they were having to, those PSI employees were having to work 36-hour shifts. You know, 36 on and 36 off, whereas the contract calls for 24 on and 48 off. It's a big stress factor. But also, it really became a, and I know Batavia's not alone in this, and there's, there's multiple levels to this, you know, kids that want to become firefighters, you got to go through being paid on call. And in a town like Batavia to get on staff, it's kind of been the rule that you go through PSI, be a paramedic. Great that we have a lot of our, and we've benefited from that because of a lot of our firefighters are licensed paramedics, and that's, that's definitely a good thing. So as we, excuse me. So having that progression to, to become a full-time firefighter, because that's what many of them aspire to, many of the young people that want to become firefighters, that's, they want to be a full-time firefighter, whether they want to be a paramedic and a firefighter, you know, some do, some don't. But pushing them to go through that system, I think, is, is creating problems for us, and here's, here's why. The, many of them want to become full-time firefighters, and if they've got to go through and work for a private company where they're going to be, you know, they were paid less, they don't start earning a pension, their benefits are less, why stick around here and have to go through that when there's opportunities elsewhere? As we said, the market right now, there's a shortage. And I can, I know several people that have done this, that have aspired to be firefighters in Batavia. One in particular, I've known for many years and have talked to him recently, he was paid on call in Batavia, he, he went to school, got his paramedic license, and, you know, didn't want to go through PSI, so ended up going to another department, still wanting to get back to Batavia. That was- Still wanting to get back to Batavia, that was, was his desire. But last time I talked to him, he's like, I'm going to have way more opportunity here and I won't have to go through PSI. So I, I think that's, that's a problem for us. When we've got this system where to become full-time firefighter, you've got to go through this system. Now, don't get me wrong, don't confuse, I don't want me to confuse Tri-City Ambulance with PSI. PSI is a contractor. They're a private entity that's in it for profit. And they've got to make their profit somewhere, so they got to pay people less. Bear with me here. But I don't believe the model's working anymore. The, the firefighters put that, you know, in Batavia, the professional firefighters sent us that letter with their concern, offering to do, to man the ambulance, because they're paramedics and they're qualified to do so. But they were informed, no, you can't do that because they don't have the liability insurance or the, what was the other insurance? And, you know, malpractice, basically.
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp too, yeah. So they were told, thanks, but no thanks, we, you know, we can't allow you to do that. So we, you know, we've, it's been more than just one time that the ambulance hasn't been banned. I know it was said that a person called off. Yeah, that's the most recent one. This was back in January, and they were talking about multiple times. I was also informed, and that's interesting you brought that up, Mayor, that they, they were offering a thousand dollars. And I believe they did find someone to take a thousand dollars. It happened to be someone that's not a, normally on an ambulance, someone that works in a hospital in the city that's never been to Batavia, coming out for the day to get that thousand dollars. Now, what kind of, you know, quality care are we going to get, are citizens of Batavia going to get if someone's not even from here? The turnover rate, from what I'm hearing from the firefighters, is significant to where it's a few months and you got two new people. That's very problematic. And so just, just going out for rebid to something else isn't, I don't think is going to solve a problem. So I guess in, in looking into all of this, and I appreciate your, your presentation, Chief, some of the questions that I had, I didn't quite, haven't quite gotten answers to them. So is it, is it true that, you know, some, they're working 36-hour shifts and 36 on? Has that become a practice or is that?
That occurred at the end of last year.
Okay.
Where we had a shortage voluntarily. They went to 36, 36 hours, but at no time in January or anything were we ever short.
So they, they wrote the letter probably in response to that what happened last year.
You had to force overtime for the fire department as well due to manpower shortages?
Well, there's many times just due to trades and, and call-offs that, you know, they work pa, you know, that, we, we don't allow them to work more than 48 hours straight. They do that either voluntarily for trades so they can have other days off, or they do it for overtime because there's filling in for people who are on vacation or are called in sick. So it's, it's a common practice throughout the fire service. We cap it here at Batavia at 48 hours for safety purposes, but there's some departments that don't cap it and they work, you know, for days. And we feel that that's, that's a safety concern for us.
So, and, and I did, the contract that Tri-City, that was in 2017, that's been renewed each year, is, I reviewed that and it does talk about them being on 24 hours. So, you know, that 36 is pushing it. And what we're hearing from the, the Batavia firefighters is that's problematic because people are stressed, that in combination with the turnover, what kind of teamwork are we, we able to develop when it's a revolving door? These are the things that, that really concern me.
The 24, 48 is the standard base.
Yeah.
Yeah, base schedule for both firefighters and the paramedics.
Exactly.
That's what our, our department and the Tri-Cities utilize as a base schedule is 24, 48.
So my understanding then is another question, is, are the coordinators that are provided by PSI, are they also paramedics that are on the ambulance or are they?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they run, they're assigned to a shift and they just coordinate.
Okay, so the coordination is addition to being.
Yeah, it's a supervisory position.
All right.
Within PSI for each department.
Okay.
And there's assistant coordinators also, so that if one is unavailable or something, there's an assistant to take care of the required paperwork.
And now, and they're required by the contract to have 10 years experience unless you approved of it. Is that, is that, is that the norm, that the coordinators have 10 years of paramedic experience?
It used to be the norm.
It used to be the norm. It's, I, I feel for you, it's hard to fill.
Right, it's less likely, but the 10 years isn't necessarily within the Tri-City ambulance system.
Exactly, yeah.
It's 10 years as a paramedic.
Overall, yeah.
Many of them do have that, it's just not presently here.
Yeah. How about, you had mentioned that the, that St. Charles and Geneva both require them to be, what do you call it, FOB?
No, it's actually Geneva and Batavia.
Or Geneva and Batavia.
Basic Operations firefighter.
Okay, all right.
Which means that they have basic knowledge of firefighter skills.
Gotcha.
So that when they arrive on.
They have a certificate from them.
Right, so that when they arrive on the scene of a fire, they know how to properly dawn equipment apparatus for their own personal safety, can approach a fire scene to assist in the retrieval of patients and also work on patients and provide immediate medical care if they're in a hot zone.
Okay, I appreciate that. I heard you wrong then because I would have thought, why would St. Charles?
St. Charles is.
Have we not? Because the contract allows us to require that, so I would say.
Correct, no, St. Charles has chosen to waive that. They are just, they only require them to be paramedics only. Some of them are basic operations firefighters, but as part of our agreement, we, we require it. And if they don't have it, they are sent to school for that training.
Okay.
To, to achieve it.
All right. So also in the contract, it lays out amounts that we're increasing each year for those years. And I don't know what the current amounts are from the last two years. Because this, this contract was 2017, which could be extended each year, only listed for four years, and it was 2.5 million. And that went, went up gradually like 1%, then it went up 2%. So right now, or the last two years ago was 2.6 million. That's what Tri-City pays to PSI annually.
Paramedic services, it's, it's in there as a flat amount, not a percentage?
Yeah, I just figured percentages to see what it was growing at.
Okay.
And I thought it was very, growing at a very small rate, so whoever negotiated, good job.
That goes to the mayor.
Yeah. So, but my question is, where does that revenue come from? If we're, if the city of Batavia is just paying 240,000, St. Charles is paying 240,000 annually, where does that 2.6 million come from?
Ambulance billing.
Pardon?
Ambulance billing.
Okay, ambulance billing, all right.
Ambulance billing.
So with that ambulance billing, they, they're able to pay, and you said there's been some residuals sometimes that have been divided up, if I'm correct. For two years ago, for 2.6 million, was PSI able to provide the service they're providing for that, or do they have other sources of revenue?
Well, I can't speak to PSI's business practices.
Exactly, yeah.
I can tell you.
That's a big concern that I have because it's a private entity now, and we don't really know what, what those finances are.
I don't have a right to know.
Yeah, exactly.
They are here tonight, so we could hear from them what the, if you're comfortable sharing what the pay and benefits structure that you provide for employees are. But that may also be, you know, information you deem to be, you know, something.
But the reason I brought that up, you know, first, when I heard about the thousand-dollar bonus, I'm like, oh, that's, they can afford that, wow. Then I heard just last week, and I was, that there was announced that the PSI was going to raise the starting wage from, for a paramedic in St. Charles, Geneva, Batavia by 15,000. So the starting pay would go to 80,000 with a $7,500 sign-on bonus.
That's correct, effective August 1st.
I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding how, we start a firefighter at about 71, I think.
72 and some change, plus, plus, there's stipends and bonuses.
Exactly, I get that, but, yeah. So I'm, I'm having a, we're, we're saving money by having a company that's paying people to do this, the work, more than what we're paying our people. And so that model that I talked about, about outsourcing doesn't, it doesn't jive to me. And so I'm wondering, is there other revenue that comes into this?
There's, well, it's a total compensation package, which I understand, so it's not all base, yeah, not all base salary.
You know, they've got health and dental, they've got paid vacation and sick time, 401k employer match, you know, is it that much?
As I put in my PowerPoint, that's all in the vendor's cost. They get a flat rate, which is by the contract, which you have a copy of the last four, and I can get you a copy of the, you know, the most latest extension.
I'm not just assuming that the last two years haven't grown more than what the norm was.
I'd be happy to get, it's public record.
Yeah, exactly.
Because it's with a, you know, governmental entity, so I, I can get you a copy of the latest. But it's a flat rate, flat fee, which is paid month, you know, broken into 12-month payments and paid monthly. And any costs above and beyond that are absorbed by that vendor, as they are in any bid or quotation process, unless it's, unless it's otherwise.
So that vendor has a lot of overhead just besides the employees there.
Absolutely. And, and what may happen is they, they made this deal in the past, right? Circumstances have changed. There's this terrible shortage in the labor market where they have had to increase pay and benefits, which has resulted in higher costs for them. And then if we have, you know, and when we go to renewal, I don't know, maybe we'll see that they come back with a higher cost for their services than they did in the past. It's just like plowing. It's just like, any of the services that, you know, we contract for as a city, we're seeing those costs escalate as well.
Yeah, I get that. And I just, I'm trying to make sure we understand fully what's happening. Because I know it's been said, oh, that's way too expensive, there's pension costs, there's this and that. Well, all of a sudden, their starting salary is higher, significantly higher, where's, how's this working?
Well, it's the difference between in the collective, being responsible for contribution of $240,000 versus hiring the 12 people it would take to run our two ambulances at a cost of $2 million for.
Well, we would be collecting, we would be getting all the billing now. So that's a piece that's, that's, you know, that, that to me has been very deceptive. Even our website talks about, when you look at Tri-Cities, it shows a table of the fees that are charged, which are mostly paid by insurance company, Medicare. But those are going to, well, they're going to Tri-City, but then paying the, you know, what if we were keeping all of those fees and employing them? That has to be figured in the equation of what our costs are.
And all of them.
Presently, yeah, present. The other costs are the revolving door. You know, we, I'm very proud of the fire department for having an ISO rating of one. That's, that's fantastic. And, but it concerns me when it's getting out there because, you know, some of us ultimately received from firefighters from neighboring towns that are concerned about what's happening in Batavia.
The fire department has had a position that has itself been unable to fill for more than one year. And we called 95 people on the list, or 98.
Because the, the list.
There was 98 total, we were able to hire one off of, out of 98.
We called all of those people on the list.
But that was a three-year-old list is the problem. You know, we didn't do that because, because we're relying on the model that you, you bring people through PSI. And, and the young people that, that want to aspire to be in Batavia have decided, I'm going elsewhere.
Yeah, our, our model is.
And that's, to me, is the biggest concern. It's back to the opportunities for the young people in this community that want to be in Batavia, that, that, you know, are committed, they would be, belong to the team. When we have a revolving door, we don't know who that team is.
Right, just for clarification though, we don't require them to go through PSI.
Right, we don't.
There's no, it's done as a separate, under the state statute.
We hire plenty of paid-on-call.
Hiring and testing process. So there's no requirement to be part of the department or part of PSI.
So of the last 10 hired full-time firefighters, how many would you say have gone through? Because I've, I've been told that that's kind of the norm. It's, maybe I'm wrong.
I thought it was more the norm that we hired from paid-on-call. And the reason being is that we do a tremendous amount of training with the paid-on-call individuals, and it's a huge investment for us. But the reason why we have the paid-on-call is because it offers us a perfect opportunity when a position becomes available, that, those individuals are already part of kind of our culture, are, you know, have worked side by side with us.
We give preference points for our paid-on.
Why do we still have open positions then if we have paid-on-call people that get hired to be full-time firefighters?
You have to go through the state statute testing process.
Testing process.
And we just. So there's no one, there's no paid-on-call that are, that are looking to be full-time that are on the list?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, and we prefer to hire paid-on-call. We get preference points for that very purpose. But under the state statute, we have to go through a testing process.
How about firefighters that are also paramedics?
We require that now. That's part of the minimum requirement.
All full-time firefighters?
All our new hired full-time firemen are required to be paramedics.
Okay.
And basic operations firefighters. There are other communities due to, to the shortage and stuff have waived that requirement, Aurora being the most notable one at present. But they only required in the last, in their last testing process, they went to the minimum requirement of a high school diploma or GED, and then they hired their personnel, and then they put them through the training and schooling, running an academy within their own department. And presently have 15 brand-new employees or new employees that they can't get into a paramedic class because there's not enough openings. And they are working diligently to provide some type of course for them with the state and other institutions to provide that training. Because there's such a shortage and such an overload on the current educational process, we just cannot turn them out fast enough.
So I understand the shortage. In education, we have the same problem. They're, the teacher prep programs are at 50% enrollment from where they were five years ago, pre-pandemic.
And it's not facilities. You're absolutely correct, Tony. It has to do with teachers and personnel.
Yeah.
Educators.
So that's, that's what gives me great concern to continue on the model we have, knowing there's a shortage, knowing that young people that want to be, you know, first responders would love to get on full-time in a fire department.
We, we have a program that we make available, starting with an explorers post through the high school, which I'm sure you're familiar with, through Batavia. And then they can go on to be, you know, through the Fox Valley Career Center to get their BOF and come on to us as cadets. And we send them through the Illinois Fire Service Institute to get their basic operations firefighter aspect. And then we will, we will sponsor them in paramedic programs, which it's not required, but it's advantageous. And the courses are so full that this last time, we had three paid-on-call who couldn't get into the Southern Fox program out of Delnor here, but we were able to, to get them into the Kishawaki program through the, through the DCLP system, through Northwestern due to, you know, some influence and encouragement.
That's a good sign that.
And we had last, last time we had three, very proud of the fact, three, three individuals came through that program, up through explorers, cadets, BOF, and went through the paramedic program here at Delnor, even being valedictorian of the program. And actually, I was, you know, we're looking for people, they weren't on our list at the time because we have to follow the state statute. Another neighboring department happened to be testing, we're able to pick them up. And at graduation, that chief thanked me for all the training and service. We've produced a number of great firefighters and continue to, firefighters and paramedics, which we're proud of for other departments. We can't hire them all, I wish we could, you know, but we have enhanced the fire service and the EMS program throughout the area and even in other states. One of those went to Tennessee, and we had another one go to Austin, Texas. So we've provided these young individuals with a lot of opportunity, and we'd love, we'd like no more than, for more Batavia students to take a part in it. It's just recruitment and dedication that caused.
I think you should be very proud of that program.
I am, extremely.
Those things you do, I think that's fantastic. It's just that bump there, that, that, you know, we've got, we put so much into attracting and, and, you know, grooming, that's maybe not the appropriate word, into educating and promoting, and then all of a sudden, well, some of you, every other city employee has a pension from the administrator to the receptionist. But you paramedics, no. And, and I think that's a, that's a shame. That's a shame, and we're losing opportunity to build a more cohesive team that's not a revolving door. And, and that's, you know, that's, that's my take. Again, I think Tri-City Ambulance has served very well for four decades. I think it, it should continue. I think it, it should continue to, to collaborate with the, with the other two cities and, uh, you know, but I think we need to take a closer look at our paramedics and our ambulance and, um, and make sure we are serving the citizens of Batavia the best possible way we can and not have a revolving door with people that have never been in Batavia before.
Thank you. And just to say, to reiterate what Tony said, thank you for the presentation. That was very beneficial, getting the whole history. Thank you, Mayor, for your comments, too. Something, Tony, as you were talking, um, and also during this discussion, I was just realizing, when we have paramedics who can only be on the ambulances and/or can assist if needed in a situation, but where we have our own trained paramedic firefighters who cannot assist on ambulances, that just doesn't make us very agile as a department, both for filling vacancies as needed. Um, I think, if I understand, for our paid-on-call and our sworn officers or sworn members, they can go back and forth between stations as needed and between the different engines and trucks as needed, too. They aren't just required on one vehicle, like that's not the only area they're staffed. So as you said, they can like trade position, or, you know, trade shifts as needed for vacation. But when we have a paramedics where we are not able to do that within our own department, that just doesn't make us very flexible as a department. Um, and I'm just imagining if everybody in our department could share all of these positions over time, like that would make us incredibly agile as a department, which to me is very And I understand what Tony's saying, like long-term costs, uh, perhaps it would kind of even out when you take into account how much extra we are paying a for-profit company. With, if it was all within the city, we don't have to make a profit. We're just paying costs of running ambulances and staffing. And also, like, this has been a program that's worked excellent for 40 years, but I'm sure departments are very different now than they were 40 years ago. And maybe they were more agile 40 years ago. Maybe, um, our members, our Batavia firefighter members were able to help on the ambulances when we started this program 40 years ago. I'm not, I'm not sure how that worked, but, um, those, and, you know, with our, all of our recent storms, we talk so highly of even our, Batavia having its own electric department and how, um, I think even words of how flexible that makes us and how we can get right on to our own calls, um, and how much we value having our own electric department and not using a ComEd or another bigger for-profit company. And that's just, I see this as a very similar situation.
And I would, I would add to that. Thanks for bringing that up. If, if this is about, we couldn't afford it, well, and it's about saving money, well, why don't we outsource electric? Why don't we outsource a water department? Why don't we outsource streets? Administration, police, well, you know, we could, we could save a ton of money. But we're supposed to be providing the best possible service, and I don't think we do provide the best possible service when we've got a revolving door. And that's, that's my concern.
I guess to address all the remains, uh, things, the, uh, and as the mayor stated, when we first began 40 years ago, there were one and one. One, one paramedic provided by PSI and one by the department at that point in time. And then to enhance the service, we went to two paramedics. So you had two paramedics on the ambulance. Many of our current paramedics who work for PSI also choose to be paid-on-call. And they go through the training and they work for us part-time to help cover shifts and things like that. That opportunity is open to our full-time firemen from PSI. They choose not to, to get hired on part-time with PSI. They, but many of them have other part-time jobs and, you know, doing other things, construction and electric services and different trades other than the paramedic services. So the opportunity is available if it's so chosen. But in addition, many of our paid-on-call do come up through ranks and choose, and it's voluntary, it's not a required aspect of it, to go to work for PSI for the experience and aspect. Because a lot of times employers, you know, and public employers, uh, give them extra credit or benefit for having that experience, especially as young individuals and things. And they're teamed with a senior mentor, paramedic, or somebody who can, you know, help them along, just like they are in our fire engines and things. We do the exact same thing through a mentorship program and other aspects. In, in regard to PSI having sent over other, uh, personnel, yeah, they, they get to move around from the Tri-City ambulances, from St. Charles to Geneva to Batavia, such as ours do, you know, uh, throughout our units, from one engine to another, but so do our medics. They'll work at, at Station Two, one shift, and they'll work at Station One the other, or they may work at St. Charles or the other. And when we do get someone from a different contract, they're usually what they call swing medics or part-time fill-in medics. They have to go through an orientation with us, and they ride on our ambulances as an orientation. And if they do happen to work, and we have a few of them who work in, uh, the, the medical field within a fixed facility, medical field, many of them went to those facilities during COVID. They came off the ambulances, they went into those facilities, they have their paramedics, they want to maintain their licenses, so they come and they work part-time. But like the gentleman you spoke of happens to be a critical care RN out of an ER who's now working the ambulance. So his qualifications are a little bit higher than just a paramedic in that particular case. Yes, he's not from Batavia, he did an orientation, but he is teamed with someone, you know, who is least familiar, or a driver. He's not allowed to drive our rigs until he's trained to do so. And that's the same with our firefighters. We have to go through driver training and programs to come up and through, whether they choose to be, go on as part-time or full-time with, uh, whether it be another contracted ambulance or EMS service, or even the hospitals or something, is no different than our firefighters who can go part-time working and work at those hospitals or ambulances, or even anywhere else in the trades. So those are individual decisions, not mandated or enforced by the fire department.
And I get that. But it's, it's a shame that I see, you know, young people that aspire to become firefighters, and they got a piecemeal stuff together and don't, don't get a, get into a full-time position as easily and, and start earning a pension. And, and so, you know, there's costs related to that by not having them join us right on, and they join later in their careers, they have to work longer, and then we pay them when they're more expensive and their pensions are still going to be there for us, uh, expenses at that time.
I can't even hold on to my last one. He waited till he turned 21. He was hired the week after he turned 21 off my ambulance by the local, by the neighboring fire department. Because they have those opportunities. Right now, as you know, we talked about, when I was trying to get on, I went against hundreds of people to try to get my position. Now, they don't even have to knock on the doors, they're, they're actually recruiting from us and other departments, which is a challenge for all us departments. Everyone's coming from other departments, creating, you know, this competition on whose, they can move around, they can port their pensions, they can go to communities. Now, I think we're a destination community. I've been on record saying that. I said that to our Police and Fire Commission. I believe it for our police department. You're seeing them come. They have the opportunity for lateral transfers. We used to, 15, 20 years ago, and it was unfortunately legislated out. Fire can no longer do lateral transfers. I wish we could. I wish we could get those people like the PD does, those experienced people, those people who can move their pensions and things. Great opportunity because I believe, you know, I, I believe we're a destination department. We have a lot to offer this community. It is a fantastic community, hometown community that people want to be a part of.
I agree with you 100% on that. You know, that's the, we made the school district, and when Ron Lake was board president, he used to say that all the time. And I was president of the Teachers Association, they, uh, we were a destination district, and we did that because we valued all our people. And when we have some people that are employees and some people that are outsourced, we're not valuing all our people. And that's, that.
Absolutely, Tony, and you see it in the high schools. People move to this community just for this education, just for the programs that are here. I just heard about it the other day, the opportunities that are provided here in the Tri-Cities and Batavia specifically. So I, I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, and I, I think, you know, that's a benefit we have. People want to be here, whether it be, it's part of the part-time service, it's part of a contract, or a different private business or public business. People want to be a part.
Could you, um, could you provide a list of the current PSI paramedics that are assigned to Batavia and their start dates? Yeah, that'd be helpful information.
So I, I do have a question about even our current situation, but I think long-term, um, it's worth continuing to consider what, long-term, the next 10, 20 years, what I think Batavia, what this should look like. But short-term, in our current contract, um, you know, it's very concerning if even once we have an ambulance that's out of service due to a staffing issue, especially because we have a contract with, um, is it with TCA or is it with PSI? What is our contract?
We don't have a contract. TCA has a contract.
TCA has a contract.
Contract with PSI.
PSI, so.
Government agreement.
We have an IGA.
My only job is to manage the local resource here. I don't.
But we're paying a set amount of money to have working ambulances, so.
TCA pays it, but we pay a, we pay $240,000 for our portion.
For our portion. But also, it just ease of, peace of mind for our residents that, you know, we always will have emergency services within minutes of them when needed. But I guess my, my question is, is for the short term, um, and I know they, they're offering that raise to get paramedics for TCA, but, um, I just want to make sure that we always have two ambulances working and running in Batavia.
We have six ambulances. I mean, being part of, we're.
I know, in Batavia.
TCA, and if we were not part of TCA and we had a staffing shortage, and we very well could because of the number of people who are no longer, you know, interested in that career, in that case, we wouldn't have a second ambulance. We'd, we'd just be out.
Well, but also, we, it has been stated multiple times tonight, but also in many, many meetings before, that, um, our ambulance service is up significantly, and it's our most-run calls.
It, it's important to note, Leah, that we always have ALS service provided. We have ALS frontline engines for immediate service, plus the ambulances, and they, they support each other. The ambulance is a transport vehicle for advanced care, but initial, immediate ALS care is provided many times by the engine. So that law, there is never a loss of ALS care. And even if we are tied up on a large incident or thing, we backfill that. I mean, that is done through mutual aid agreements and procedures, no different than our electric department during major storms and stuff. None of us can handle everything. So when we, we experience those peak loads and things, we bring in our neighbors to help, just like we reciprocate that and we go to help them. And then when times during a major storm and stuff, we have to buckle down and we, we recall, we ask for the help, and we, we get it done. We make sure there's always service.
Our IGA is two ambulances in Batavia, one in Geneva, except during their peak hours. Then they have two, and then two in St. Charles.
Yeah, the IGA requires five frontline ambulances plus a demand, which are housed at our stations. They don't require them to be in Batavia at any one particular time.
And so how does, how does TCA determine if there's a shortage of paramedics available, which ambulance gets, is not running?
That's determined by the three chiefs who manage the, the operations based on demand and load. And we, we do that all day long through policies and procedures. We shift ambulances that, that what we call the day car, the demand ambulance, 252 out of Station Two, moves across the valley depending on peak times, all day long from eight to five. If we got multiple calls here, they're sitting here in our station. Sometimes they're sitting at a central location. One of our identified locations happens to be Homestead because it's, it happens to be our biggest, you know, utilizes us. So that's why we picked that as a position. And we have changed those dynamically based on not only call volumes but service, but also road construction, other situations that occur during the day that happen. So we, we, we move them around, and that's not just done by the, the chief's directions, it's also done through our cooperative with the Tri, with TRICOM as a dispatch agency and AVL locators to, to let us kind of know where they need to be.
Can you recall any major Mavis where, where, where you felt concerned about staffing? I remember even going back to some of the tornado activity that hit downstate. They were, I mean, every apparatus was.
Every community has run into large incidents. I would say probably the most notable one for the Tri-Cities was the Pheasant Run Fire, which went up through multiple boxes. I think it, now he might get, I think it went all the way up to at least the fourth level, not a fifth level.
The September, the September 11th box.
That tapped the Tri-Cities, but we have a backfill operation that brings them in. At that point in time, and I'm proud to say it, that Batavia was the best staff of the Tri-Cities during that initial, you know, initial operation. So it takes a little bit of time to level it out because we're coming from long distances, like you said.
The only reason I'm asking this is, is this is very sensitive kind of stuff that can concern people. I, I just want to make sure that if anyone is, is watching and my eyes glazed over for a second, we got real technical for a second there. If we still have people watching us at home, I'm less concerned about calling 911 and having somebody show up. I know someone's, is, is going, is going, going to be there, even if there's a mass sort of event that's happening here. So would you say that you've ever been concerned that we were providing less than, than exemplary service to, to our community?
I'm proud to say we provide exemplary service all the time. Now, there are challenges, you know, when we have many operations or large-scale going operations. So that's one of the reasons I'm, I'm back and I'm in the station doing that. I can tell you when the ambulance browned out, I was here. I'm managing that personally. I'm around for those reasons because when we do extend our services, you'll find the chiefs, and I can speak for the Tri-City chiefs, they are front and foremost there handling. And we're talking about, okay, can you handle in my town or can I handle in yours? So we work seamlessly together. That's one of the greatest things, is TRICOM and the Tri-City ambulance operations, is the Tri-Cities work as a unit to provide that exemplary service in these communities.
I'm very new to my appointment, Your Honor, and I'm, I feel like I haven't earned my voice yet there. I'm still learning operations, one of, but I guess the one thing I can say is the one meeting I have attended so far, um, I was pretty astonished by how seamlessly the discussion went and the, the high stakes that were at that, that meeting, the types of things that they discuss and the, the, the type of discussion that I saw. We do have some great people in our, in our neighboring communities.
Anyone doesn't say there's times of concern. I think, you know, I, I think that's human nature. You have concerns, but you address those concerns and to meet those challenges. And again, well, Gary already left Public Works and et cetera. We are sometimes all in our departments stretched, either through, you know, well, COVID stretched us all and unforeseen circumstances, but we had to rise to those occasions and come up with, you know, plans and alternatives to meet those demands.
These are quasi-government agencies that do operate with Open Meetings Act.
Yeah, and, and they're attended, and we encourage that. We encourage the transparency and the involvement and be happy to answer.
Certainly, uh, broadcast, uh, to the group here that if anyone wants to attend one of those meetings, they're certainly, certainly welcome to. And, um, if anyone wants to hear, uh, hear firsthand, they're certainly welcome to join me on my next meeting as well, too. I just want to make sure everyone here is on the same page in terms of, of feeling confident.
You're, you're all invited to the TCA. Now, not all of you at once, you have an open meeting.
No, we can't, not all at once.
You're welcome to join or, you know, talk to the chairman of the TCA, and maybe they'll have a combined meeting. You might know him, so.
It's the, it's the 8:30 in the morning timeframe that sometimes.
It is, and you'd be surprised, I made it to that one on time.
We, we meet at Geneva Fire Station because it is centrally located, but.
Actually, one, well, I missed that meeting by days, I think.
Yeah, two days.
Yeah. I'll be at the next one.
Yep, see you at the next one.
Yeah, I was just going to see what the other stakeholders think of the current situation and, and, you know, you and your professional opinion, you're, I mean, you're in the trenches. You're doing it every day. Is it almost a dance point? Is it a dire need? I mean, I, the contract thing beside, you know, put aside, it's, it's the real reality of are we running into a staffing issue? Obviously, as a whole, the market is running into a staffing issue, it sounds. So that's a reality. If not change. it sounds. So that's a reality. If not changing a vendor does not put us in a better spot, what does in your opinion? Or if it doesn't relate to that at all, I mean, what do we do as a, as a department, as a community, as a whole to entice people to want to come here, I guess?
I can't speak for the other chiefs, you know, honestly, but I can tell you that we work together to provide, you know, alternatives or options to enhance, you know, not only our service, but our recruitment and things. We are currently working on a cooperative to do our next test for full-time personnel, where all three of the communities will test together to provide a unified list, to provide more opportunities. Because we do believe that we are a destination area and we do believe that that will help us attract more quality and better candidates. And we're fortunate. We don't have, we don't have turnover here in Batavia because we are just that. People come here, they want to be here and they stay here. So we have that opportunity. Now, as far as individual vendors, it's the same as I was here a couple of years ago on fire engines. I asked for a fire, you know, we go out for an RFP, we go out for a bid, we utilize different types of bidding process to give us the best quality, you know, purchase that we can for the, for the best dollar that we can provide for our community and our citizens. And we don't, we do that throughout the fire service, not only on equipment, but, you know, for any vendor at this point.
Yeah. And I'm, I'm more or less getting at, okay, so obviously PSI has their competitors, you know, Superior is one. I don't know. There's got to be others out there.
There's a couple and, you know, I'm not gonna name.
Major ones that would be, yeah, exactly.
They're, they're a large one. So is PSI.
Right. Exactly. So my question is, is, you know, if, so there is a shortage across the board, who's leading the pack? Who is enticing them to come to their team?
Well, I, I would say that you've, you heard from Tony that they just did that very thing by enhancing and raising their starting wages for this community in this area.
Right.
By $15,000, which they are obviously having to get from their own, you know, their own resources because we have not increased their costs. They have over six months left, over half a year left at the current contracted rate. Is it, you know?
They're, they're doing what they need to do as a business. I totally understand that. That's, but if, you know, and this is a cutthroat way of putting it, but if someone's out there beating them in the market, I'd like to talk to those people, you know, eventually and say, you know, hey, what are you doing to keep up your staffing and all that? And if ultimately that ends up costing us a little bit more money, that's money I'm happy spending.
On our choice to make.
Right, right, right. No, I get it. I get it. Which is why I said, you know, but members of our community are part of the stakeholders. So it is partially our decision and that's why we're sitting here talking about it, but.
And I appreciate this opportunity. And I think your voice has been heard and I heard that from Jennifer and you have your elected representatives here. And I believe they will go back to the TCA and most likely, I, I'm just an advisor, but most likely you'll probably see them consider, you know, an RFP in the next, you know, period or for the next contract. I can't speak for them. They're a separate board and entity, but I know that your representatives have heard you and I have a feeling a few other people have heard us tonight, too.
Sure. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
I liked the presentation as well. I liked the history.
I'll send you a copy.
Yes. Thank you for that, Chief. My question is for Tony from the other perspective, you know, if we were to not, if it's not, if it's not a debate of PSI versus competitor A, B, and C, if it's a discussion of outsourcing versus in-house, what do you see as the step forward in that discussion?
Well, I would say, let's make all of Batavia Fire Department destination, you know, because clearly when we've had turnover and there's a section there that's not part of the destination culture. So how to get there? That's why I called this discussion to, so we start having it. My hope is that, you know, some of you have, have gotten better insight to what's happened. I know I have. I've, I've learned a lot and I appreciate what you, what you shared, Chief and Mayor. But the, the avenue to get there, if, if it were to me and I could, you know, if I were the, the king, I would say we're no longer gonna, you know, we'd certainly be willing to continue collaborating with the Tri-Cities because I think TCA is fantastic. I think TRICOM is, is fantastic, long history. It's served us well. It's the idea of some of the people that are, we want to be part of our destination culture are not part of it. They are separate and they don't stick around. They go through. And I think that's a crutch that we have, so to say. The, one last question ahead of my list, who holds the titles for the ambulance? The two ambulances?
Oh, TCA.
TCA holds the titles for both those ambulances?
TCA holds the title. They do the purchase and they hold the title and that's part of their expenses of equipment.
So we fund, what do we fund TCA more? Is that part of the 240?
It's part of 240.
Okay.
So.
Is that primary, is that their primary expenses apart from the contract?
Vehicle, vehicle costs have gone up.
Oh, I know. I get that.
Yeah. So you're looking at at least $3,000.
But that 240, is that, is that primarily for?
$240,000 for us and the other associated contributions make up the balance or difference of shortfall from the, the billing revenues.
You have revenues?
So they're looked at annually and they're done through a, an equation of utilization.
So, so those years that we, there's been excess that have come back, we haven't had to pay the 240,000.
We get.
Slower.
Yeah. It gets slower.
It's not zero.
It's never, it's, it's never been zero, but, but they spend down the reserves.
But the bulk of the ambulance services paid for by fees that are collected. Is that accurate?
Does Senator property tax also go?
Yeah. There's no property taxes for TCA. The only, only tax money that's spent for TCA is our contribution.
The 240.
The 240, correct.
But nothing else from our?
No.
Which I would characterize as a user fee, not a ambulance tax. It's a user fee.
One of the things I'd like to throw in here is, is that we've, you know, having been the chairman up there since it started, one of the things that's happened over the years, we've had people come in and look at this and kind of raise some of the same questions you have. And one of the things that comes out is, is that Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles residents are very well insured in comparison to many of the other parts of the Chicagoland region. We got people that most everybody's got, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, whatever, and they've got everybody that's, most people in town have insurance. So if they call the ambulance, the ambulance gets, submits the bill and we get paid. So.
I've negotiated a lot of those teacher contracts that provide that.
Right. Well, I mean, I'm just saying that, that we get a lot of money from the insurance companies because we, they're very well insured. I get down in south suburbs, I'll stop there and say who it was, but those towns down there, they, many, most of the people don't have insurance. They don't, you know, so if something happens, they're on the hook to pay for everything, you know. So we really are very, very fortunate that we live in this affluent area that everybody can do it. The other thing I just want to say, Chief Hanson certainly is a leader in the group, but we are very fortunate right now to have two other fire chiefs as our partners in Geneva and St. Charles, who are excellent individuals and fully understand this profession and could sit here and have the same conversation we've just had. We don't have a weak chief and we may be in the past, we've had some, but right now we've got a strong group. And the thing that I would be hesitant to say, let's walk away from Tri-City, is there's so much collaboration going on, this moving all these vehicles around during the day. And when, you know, we're, right now we're going under a significant increase in ambulance calls from mental illness. And so we've got to, you know, so now we kind of collaborate with that. And, you know, there are times, I think we use the Eastside Geneva Station for staging ambulances sometimes when there's certain things going on. And I think the rule is if all five of the ambulances are busy, the last ambulance on the street, wherever it is, changes quarters to the Eastside Geneva Station because that puts it central to the, all three towns in the Tri-Cities. So there's a lot of advantages to the cooperation we've had here. And I've had several other cities come in here and want to talk to the chiefs and whatever have you and say, how are you doing this? This, this really looks like it is. And then as you mentioned, we got the Governor's Award for a great example of intergovernmental cooperation and working together. So.
And I, and I support that. I'm, I'm, I guess.
It will go away.
Abby, you asked the question, you know, where do we go from here? Have we explored that, you know, where the interests lie with the, with the other two cities? If they would want to continue that kind of cooperation, but not using a contract service?
I have. And I recently met with both city administrators and they adamantly do not want to do that. And so they would suggest.
The councils, maybe.
I think that other two chiefs are strongly, they have the same position Chief Hanson has. So you've got the staff here, kind of like what you see here tonight of the other two towns, saying, boy, this is a good thing. It's running well. We've got the backup and we've got the insurance money coming in. It keeps the burden on the taxpayer real low and whatever. So we've got some good things going for us right now here on this.
Yeah. But I contend that it's at the expense of those people that are providing that service. And they, they, you know, they, no other department in this city, is there no other, there is no other group of people that work for this city that do such vital work that don't have a pension, that don't earn, aren't on the benefits that, that every other employee in this district or in this district, city has. And I find that to be a problem.
Keith Keenan?
So we have a staffing shortage of paramedics, whether it's through PSI or through our own efforts, right?
Locally and nationally, there's a shortage of paramedics.
Okay. So I'm, I understand that whether we have PSI or other competitors or ourselves, we're still going to have a shortage because there is a shortage of people that want to be paramedics.
But we might not have the same turnover that we have because.
Okay. Because it's a destination district. The people that come and work for the city of Batavia stay for the city of Batavia and work in the city of Batavia.
So our paid-on-call people that we hire to be paramedics, is that, that's what we do?
We, we give them the opportunity to train up to be paramedics and most of them take other positions with other departments because they have those opportunities. We don't have the, you know, the need and we have, or the ability to hire all those people.
So, so that's where our, the city's bump is, is we don't have the ability to hire enough people through that? Or are we not enticing enough as a city to have just us run it? Does that make sense? If we, if.
It's a different model. It's a different model. So right now we have an intergovernmental agreement and we created Tri-City Ambulance. Tri-City Ambulance has the contract with PSI to provide the personnel for the equipment that TCA owns. The alternative would be each city does it on their own because other, if, if the contract doesn't exist.
Got it. That's what I'm trying to get at.
For ambulance services, there's no reason to have Tri-City Ambulance.
The only way, the only reason that way we could do that is hire through our own is if we got rid of.
Tri-City Ambulance.
Okay.
Like if we privatized our water and went with American Water, for example, and outsourced our water. And those wouldn't be.
We're still in this, we're still in the, in the issue of there's a shortage of people.
Yeah. We need to entice people.
Say, the only one thing I would just add, as we talk about these positions, when we talk about our paid-on-call and the paramedic positions, those positions are specifically really, they are created as stepping stones to become a full-time firefighter. Some people, just like a part-time records clerk, just like a part-time admin, just like a part-time, like of all the other part-time positions we have, there are people, some people who desire that part-time schedule and some people take that position in hopes of doing more. We have records clerks that, I can use it on the other side, who one hope, hope to become police officers one day. They may or may not. They may go to other municipalities. And when we have this part-time workforce, there's a benefit to us from a operational perspective, which the chief can way far better explain than I ever could. But then also, so we know going into that, that these positions, there will be some turnover. It's just the nature of the job. That's what they do is they come in, they get their experience, they get their training, they get their opportunity to work in the departments. And then if we have an opening, absolutely, is there value in hiring somebody who's been a paid-on-call or has worked as a paramedic for us? We know who they are. We know what they're going to do. There's absolutely value. But obviously, because we don't have from a full-time perspective that high of turnover, we don't have that, we're not hiring them, them that much. So for that group of people, it's understandably so, their desire, not all of them, because we, you know, we have people, we have part-timers that have worked with, for us for 40 years because that's their desire. But there are many that are, are young, starting out in their careers and their desire is to find a full-time position. So if we don't have one, then ultimately they're going to be looking. So I think when we talk, that's the only thing I wanted to say is when we talk about the turnover, it's not, while it makes operations, you know, challenging from time to time, it's kind of the nature of the type of position that we have, why that, why that turnover is what it is.
And just to clarify, and Wendy's aware of this, we are experiencing that right now. Again, we are only at half staff on my part-time paid-on-call. We have had so much turnover there because of the open, full-time positions within other communities. They are also going on to become full-time firefighters. We normally run an average of 30 personnel in our paid-on-call, our part-time ranks. We now are currently at 15. But we have two recruit classes going through right now and a cadet class. So right now we have a cadet class of eight that is working and should be hopefully finishing in another month. And we have a recruit class that is starting their, their program with the Illinois Fire Service Institute here in Aug, well, it just started this week. In August, six of them going to that program. So we are continuing, working to try to maintain just our part-time pool of personnel. And the demand, you know, the demand is so great and yet the interest is so small, we're struggling in that opportunity area, too.
Are those part-time positions at PSI?
No, no. Those are City of Batavia part-time firefighters, normally referred to as paid-on-call, but they're now actually part-time. That was, that's a historic term when they only used to come in and get paid for the call.
So is there only a perceived issue because of where the market is?
Tim, a point of order here. You should be recognized by the chair before speaking. Marksman.
The cadence was nice with the volley. So I was gonna go for a little longer. Jennifer had a question.
It's okay. You can.
Okay. Mark, you have a question?
So I don't think we're going to come to any conclusion tonight. And I guess what I would like to see, you don't have to answer this tonight, Chief, but there's people that have a question about, hey, can we just make this all Batavia personnel? And I'd like to see what that would look like because I would imagine that we would need to go buy our own ambulances. It would need to be more than two ambulances and we would need to have, because we would need to have better coverage because we couldn't necessarily rely on the Tri-Cities. We would be an independent group. So I would like to see what that would look like. And then we could have a discussion to say, do we want to break out? And then there can be the, the bi-city ambulance and we won't be part of it. And.
I would support that only if we incorporate a St. Geneva and all three of the communities can share in a single department because you're right, they will bankrupt us with the number of senior communities that we have.
So I mean, that's my point. We can't, it's unlikely. I mean, it's easy to say, it's easy to say it'd be more affordable, but if the other two communities, the other chiefs are not interested in this, and this is, I don't know that these are discussions that the other ones have come up with. What would it take to be our own, to supply our own ambulances and the own staff to do it? And what would that cost be? And I get there's, there's costs from insurance companies and everything, but nothing's going to change tonight. So we need to see what that would look like before we can have a further discussion to do anything different.
This was a great discussion item academically. It's great. We should still let our partners know, we're not looking to pull out of that relationship.
I agree because there's nothing.
They're watching us tonight, so we should probably communicate to St. Charles and Geneva that we are behind our agreement right now. Yeah.
And part of my point, the purpose of bringing this up to have the discussion is so the discussion continues. You know, I realize I didn't intend for us to come out of here with any conclusions on anything. I'm raising some questions that I'm very concerned about. Wendy, I'd just like to respond. Many of those part-time people that you're talking about in these departments are earning pensions. They're on IMRF, but they're working 600 hours. So.
Not as a, not, not as a, no, they're not.
If they work 600 hours in a year.
Not as a, our part-time group is a separate group altogether. They're not, well, if they are, I would, if they're working a thousand hours, sorry. So if they work a thousand hours. hours, yes, they would be eligible.
A thousand hours, okay.
Yeah, a thousand hours, yeah, if they work a thousand hours, but they don't.
Okay.
If they ever do, if they do ever do, then yes, we offer them.
Yep. Yeah. So, but my point, bringing this up, Mark, I don't think it is feasible that we just go alone. It's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, we've got a tri-city ambulance system that's been around for four decades now, and TRICOM, and it's working great. But we've outsourced and we're relying on the most critical service to be provided by people that are, it's on a revolving door. Profits are being made on them, they're working side-by-side with someone else that's getting better benefits, getting a better pension. And we're not as, we have a section of people that can't participate in the destination culture that we've developed here. And so, opening up the discussion, you know, maybe some of the other aldermen and some of our neighbors are listening to this, maybe they think I'm, you know, lost my mind, but at least, you know, people should be informed, you know. Above all, my biggest point of bringing this, this discussion forward was to shine some light so people were aware of what's, what the situation is. And I think this discussion that I think has been fruitful in that, and accomplishing that. So, thank you, and I appreciate your efforts with this, chief.
Yeah, no problem, Tony. I can't speak for whether this is a PSI contract destination. They have 30 contracts. I don't know what the level is throughout their 30 contracts. So I can't speak whether this is a desired contract, or how that, all I can speak-
As of last week, I think.
All I can speak to is the, you know, the Batavia Fire Department aspect. And as far as Mark can, I just manage the department. You know, you honor me by allowing me to manage, so, you know, some of those operational decisions, especially how you fund it, is your decision, not my decision. I get to work with the funding that you provide me. Obviously, on recommendations, please don't cut my funding.
And we have not gone over two actual proposals yet, so we're not even aware if they're going to submit one. Certainly, cross that bridge when it is time. Is there any additional discussion regarding this, or we have?
I just wanted to reiterate your position that I am very happy with the relationship we have with Geneva and St. Charles, and I want to make sure anybody watching this realizes that I am definitely very much, very happy with the arrangement we have right now, and look for it to be fruitful in the future.
Dan?
Sir?
Can I turn around a little bit?
Absolutely, please.
As the former rep for the City of Batavia on Tri-City Ambulance Board, I've been around long enough that this has come up a couple of times in discussions, and I'm trying to remember which one of the chiefs, or former chiefs from either St. Charles or Geneva, had done, just a quick number run of what it would cost if we each split apart. And it would raise about $1 million to the cost per year, I think it was for Batavia and for St. Charles, to what it would cost to run the service they have now. And I don't think that included the insurance cost, because that was something that came up in our discussion of this the last time I remember discussing this at the Tri-City ambulance level.
Insurance costs were lower at the last time, so that's probably a baseline number here, you're absolutely right.
Yeah, and that's the, one of the big things there was that. And I have, you know, unfortunately, been the user of services several times recently from, you know, our outsourced people that are here. And as just a general person from the public, I don't think you can tell the difference from the way they operate, or the way they behave, or the way they treat people compared to our own homegrown people that have been there for 30 years. So I don't think that the outsourcing thing is a problem for me. We outsource everything when we contract out to have somebody else come in and work here. And we pay, you know, good money for somebody that's there working in the water treatment plant, right alongside our guys, and we don't know if they have a pension or not. That's not our job to decide that at that point. If we're relying on the service to provide this, that's TCA Board's decision on how they want to handle payment and what contracts they come up with. So, I don't have an issue with that, and I believe that the way our departments around here are set up with paid-on-call or part-time, or however it's, you know, described now, provides the opportunity, and I've known a lot of kids, both that have come through where I personally work, and gone through the city, and the programs out at the Fox Valley Career Center, that have chosen different departments around here just based on openings. So, you know, they will go through the paid-on-call department with one department and end up as a firefighter or a paramedic in another department. So, you know, I think the opportunities are here, and I think it's more a regional destination than it is just Batavia, when it comes to either the police or fire department. I really think that, you know, when it comes down to management of this, I think we'd end up having to add another person in management in the fire department, and all the associated costs with that. If that's something we wanted to look at, I'd be more than happy to look at it, because I think that would make a big enough statement there that we'd stay with the situation we have. I think it's something that a lot of other departments in this state should be looking at, is how they can save money by, you know, consolidating and being, you know, a unit that works together over a bigger area. So, that's, I think, all I want to say about this tonight, and I am definitely against us backing out of TCA or separating from that and running it on our own. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Dan?
Sure.
I just, I want to clarify here, I in no way am suggesting that that's what I'm proposing, that we pull out of TCA. That is not-
You are. If we hire our own paramedics, that is exactly what happens.
You didn't listen to what I just said a while ago, was start this discussion, so we can continue the discussion with our, with our partners, in exploring, how do we move to the next level and make all three cities fully destination places? And not have a subgroup of people that are being paid less because profits are being made on them.
According to them, they're not interested in having that discussion because they're satisfied with the status quo.
I haven't had that discussion with them, so, I don't know.
And Wendy, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I know there were some recent changes to things like 401K and retirement services, just in general, for organizations, even small business and whatnot. So if I hire a bunch of W-2 employees, I have to provide retirement, starting as of last year, or I pay a penalty as an employer, as a job maker. I don't know-
Actually, that doesn't apply to us as a public sector, yeah.
We're exempt from that.
Yeah.
However, as a quasi-government agency, I, they're exempt as well. But it is not a problem for a voting member to raise during the other section of the next TCA meeting, if he goes to, hey, could we look into what it would look like for expanded retirement services for the employees here? There's nothing-
Sure, yeah, there's no-
Having an academic discussion at that level.
PSI, their decisions as to what they choose to provide to their employees through, if it's 401K retirement services, completely whether, you know, TCA says that's a requirement, or they encourage that, or they can have those discussions, there's no-
Sure. And that might, that might be the cure to what it is that you're asking for, that if, if PSI is required under those new legislation to have a retirement plan of some kind, that certainly could sweeten them up. That might help.
Well, they do have a retirement plan. And that law was about providing a plan, not necessarily the contributions.
For sure. But even so, not everybody takes it, though. So this would be making sure that people take advantage of that program. It's a step in the right direction, at least.
Rick, you know, we're ready to be done with this conversation. I just want to bring before us again, just like to be careful not to just shut down conversations, and I think what Tony's even saying is like, this is just long-term, like we just want to have a long-term, like, conversation about this. Because it doesn't make sense then we should say, well, we're not going to hire 10 employees anywhere across the entire citywide if we don't want to be putting more money into staffing with the city, ever. Like, we're capped, we're done. We're done hiring. That's a silly thing to say. Wait, wait, I'm not done. So, I just want to be careful with what we say there. And then also, if we really believe that subcontracting is the best plan, then why do we have our own fire department? Why aren't we subcontracting that? I mean, we could just go down the list. So, I think the question just is, it's a very unique situation, the TCA and, or the P, or, I won't say TCA. PSI are paying for, paying a profit agency for paramedics. And perhaps in 10 years, there's a better plan, that's all.
Rick, yeah, I really appreciate the discussion tonight, and look forward to it continuing. And, you know, I'm curious, what other models are out there? Like you were saying, that models can change. We created this one from scratch, doesn't mean that we can't create another one. Can the ambulances be TSA and the personnel be ours? And we ensure them to be able to be approved to ride those ambulances that TSA still owns and owns the title to. I just agree, and I just think about the nature of the work itself, you know, being the ones that are walking into tragic, awful, gut-wrenching situations. My dad was an EMT here in town, and he didn't talk about it, but I heard through other stories, you know, the things that he would walk into. And for those to be the people that we're discussing, treating them the same way that we treat our other employees, I think is a fair discussion to have. I get that it's going to be expensive. I still think it's a fair conversation to have.
I would point out, though, from what I'm hearing on that, the pay raise was, that $80,000 applies to all the employees, even those that were there before. So someone can be there, so here's a, you know, a big morale drain, is someone that's working 10 years, all of a sudden is making the same as someone who's working one month.
Except that I think they were bringing them up to that level. They, they, they too still got a raise.
For those that were not making 80, so some might have got a $5,000 raise, and the new hire got a $15,000 raise.
I don't know what you know.
That's, that's, I can tell you just-
I don't know the pay scales are. I wouldn't talk to their pay scales unless you want to ask them up here to talk about their pay scales, because you're making an assumption that everybody's going to make $80,000.
But, one more quick thing that I forgot to mention, too. I also don't think it's unique to firefighters or to paramedics. Like, there's not a lot of people that want to work part-time, period, out there in the world anymore. We all need benefits now. Millennials, Gen Z's, like, these are not going to be part-time workers anymore. Like, that's being seen, it's on the nonprofit board that I'm on, they're seeing that with hiring. At my work, we're seeing that with hiring. That's also just maybe a model that is phasing out as well.
I have, do you have a direction, or do we have-
That just, we're going to keep talking about it.
That we bring it up for discussion in the future, if you want to revisit, or if anyone has any similar type of academic discussion, this is definitely very useful. So keep, keep, keep that in mind. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 12, this is project status.
Project status? Same as last night. That's when we have the, the city council meeting the day before, and then we follow it up with, not too much to report, although, maybe just to preview, Max is putting together the materials from the strategic planning session that we had. And although you saw dozens and dozens of things up on those pieces of paper, he's done a nice job of organizing those into about 10 outcome visions from the feedback that you provided. And so, at a meeting on the August 22nd, we're going to bring that back to you, along with a new vision, mission, and equity statement as well, for further discussion and move us toward, is if we can agree on those outcomes, then we'll go back and work in groups to create the action plans associated with that.
Keep an eye on your boxes, I'll be setting some out. With some draft reviews, the city council, if you have any thoughts or any comments that you want to share ahead of that, send them my way, so we can make sure that those are incorporated hopefully by 20th, those really smooth, that we're hopefully voting on something that everyone's kind of comfortable with. It may just be some verbal point for us to go forward with.
Moving on to number 13, others?
I just wanted to share with the council that I got a page from the police chief, that tonight, unfortunately, we had a motor, or a bicycle hit with, hit by a car out at Chilum and Kirk Road. The victim was 17 years of age, and he's been taken up to the hospital. At least, I guess he's alive, but it was a pretty bad accident. This thing with bicycles, I think is getting to be quite a community issue, as far as people not paying attention or whatever they're doing. I don't know where we're going to go with it, but, you know, I, we got this sign that the staff has now put up about, please drive carefully and whatever. If you haven't got one in your yard, I encourage you to do it, because this is, this is going to be another one in our face about what happened, why we had a 17-year-old kid hit on a bicycle. So, just so you know.
Earlier today, coming back from dropping my kids off, I watched the crossing guard go out to let some people cross there at where the quarry is, and car went right past him. It was probably a good 30 seconds that he was in the middle of the street. So this is a distracted issue. I watched someone run a stop sign in my own neighborhood, just so they could pull into their driveway, right in front of me. It is a distracted issue that is, is, needs to be, it's already been talked about, and it needs to be talked about more, and people need to just calm down.
Unfortunately, we're having a real run of it this year. I mean, we're having accidents like we've never seen, seemed to have seen before. And in CMAP, where I'm in Chicago, they're right now chasing down the amount of traffic fatalities that we've experienced in the state of Illinois this year. And they're telling us that this year, it's going to be an all-time record, that we've never had as many traffic fatalities on cars and bicycles as we already have had in Illinois. So it's going to be, I think there'll be, at the end of the year, there'll be a big howling and screaming about people driving too fast, and bicycle riders not paying attention to what they're doing, or just blowing everything off. So I'd be prepared to hear more about it, because I think that it's going to come from above, as far as what's really happening with cars and bicycles. So our, our sign is right on tune here, that we really need to get people to drive more carefully.
I would love to see an intergovernment educational push, especially with school starting, and all of the schools talking to the students about how to be safe bikers, how to be safe drivers. I saw a high schooler leaving the high school yesterday, like texting as she was pulling out of the high school, and I was just like, you don't know what you're doing in my head, you know? So, you know, just be pushing constant education to our students and to our adults. And, you know, I'd love to talk to Chief Mazza more about that, too, about how we can be-
Well, we had another tonight, so I just wanted you all to know.
Education needs to be matched with investment in infrastructure change, and design change, and policy change, because education alone is not going to change.
And empowerment, I will say this much, yesterday was the first time I'd driven my Passat in, in months. I've been in this high van for all these months, and I can see the amount of people next to me as distracted drivers. The number of screens I see of people doing something while they're going at high speeds, going back down to the Passat, I was all of a sudden, all the way down where all the cars were, and I couldn't see that they were on their screens, until I left the meeting, and I saw people's illuminated faces. And that's how I was reminded how many of us are pretty, our neighbors in danger when we, when we drive like that. At stoplights, I call people out now, from the van. I have no problem doing that, being real polite, putting the thing down, saying, you know, I'll be that guy. I don't know if anyone here wants to be that guy, but I'll, I'll take, I'll take that fight at the stoplights, because when they see my shoulders, they usually say, I'm not going to fight you, whatever. Moving on to item number 14, we need a motion to go into executive session, discuss personnel issues, if there were no others.
Agreed.
Motion second, roll call, please.
You are?
Hi.
Surl?
Hi.
Volgo singer?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Lancy?
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Pepper?
Oh, hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Solfa?
Hi.
Chanzin?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
Lehman? Chanzin.
Hi.
Baron.
Hi.
Lehman.
Hi.
Yazzy.
Hi.
Malak.
Hi.
So we're going to do executive session. That's my answer.